All right, for those of y'all who don't know, Dr. Betty Winches has served our community in some capacity with school system for 44 years. She's determined to retire and that one city body after 44 years thinks retirement's okay. I gotta start with a couple of personal stories, maybe one, maybe just one. When I was appointed to the school board by Mr. Bischoff and Mayor McBrer back in 2002, I thought with six children, I knew a lot about education. And this lady gently, calmly, patiently taught me over a lot of years that I didn't know a lot. But she, not only with me, but a lot of other school board members was just incredibly giving. What this proclamation is not gonna talk about is the fact that she literally grew hundreds, and I mean hundreds, of teachers from being neophytes to being trained professionals in the training and the curriculum. She impacted literally thousands and thousands of our students over the years. So with that, let me read this, please. Whereas Dr. Betty -- The microphone. Whereas Dr. Betty Winches has announced her plans to retire from Homewood City Schools on August 1, 2019. Whereas Dr. Betty Winches had, I said 44, it's 48 years in education with 44 of those years in Homewood City Schools. Whereas Dr. Betty Winches began her career in Homewood City Schools as an English teacher at Homewood Junior High School. And again, notice I said Homewood Junior High School, not Homewood Middle School. In August of '75, she soon advanced to Homewood Junior High Counselor from '97, that's from, it says '97. That's, yeah, '77 to '78. System-wide, seymetrist from '78 to '85, Central Park and Instruction, Central Office Instructional Support Coordinator from '85 to '94. Homewood Middle School Assistant Principal from '94 to '98. And Assistant Superintendent for Instruction from 1998 to present. And whereas Dr. Betty Winches' responsibilities as Assistant Superintendent included personnel, human resources, K-12 curriculum and instruction, assessment program, research, teacher evaluation, and district-wide strategic planning. And whereas Dr. Betty Winches has served as an administrator in Homewood City Schools for 34 years, her leadership spans and connects every generation of Homewood's leadership since its inception. And it's been essential, and that, by the way, is talking about the Homewood schools, and it's been essential in the initial development and implementation of Homewood's innovative strategic planning process. Dr. Winches has provided unparalleled continuity between several different generations of Homewood teachers and leaders. Dr. Winches' leadership is truly unique, serving as both the living historian for the Homewood City Schools and the primary catalyst for ensuring Homewood City Schools pushes itself to be both innovative and forward-thinking. And whereas Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Dr. Winches has interviewed every certified employee. We pause on that for just a second. Every certified employee hired by the school district over the past 21 years. In working collaboratively with several generations of principals and central office leaders, Dr. Winches has personally overseen and ensured the high-quality instructional personnel for which Homewood City Schools is so proud. And whereas Dr. Winches developed and initiated the use of embedded professional learning in Homewood City Schools, along with the teaming concept and the use of technology specialists, teachers utilize this collaborative time during the workday to discuss the progress of common students, plan integrated lessons, integrate technology, and conference with practices. All of these practices, first implemented by Dr. Winches in the 1990s, are still being utilized in Homewood City Schools in the present day. And whereas with over 43 activities, awards, and personal affiliations, Dr. Betty Winches' excellence and commitment is unparalleled. Now therefore, this was written from the mayor of Homewood and on behalf of all of our citizens as well as the council, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Dr. Winches for her distinguished service to this city and highly recommend her, or highly commend her for the manner in which she carried out her duties and responsibilities set in my hand and calls the great state seal of the city of Homewood affixed 22nd of April, 2019, and attested by our city clerk. Please join me in giving Dr. Winches a big round of applause. We have a presentation of a proclamation to the Homewood firefighters for the search and rescue of Reverend Sid Burgess, Reverend. I'm gonna let you come forward with all of these fine officers, so please come forward. I think it's kind of appropriate for you to be up there. Proclamation, whereas Homewood Fire and Rescue was called into action to assist in locating retired Reverend Sid Burgess. Whereas Reverend Sid Burgess served as the pastor of Edgewood Presbyterian Church from 1990 to 2013, did we get that correct? Good. And whereas Reverend Sid Burgess, an avid hiker, was last seen on Saturday, April the 6th, 2019, while hiking at White Creek Falls in Double Springs, Alabama. And whereas Chief John Bresnan, Italian Chief Charlie Boyd, firefighters Mike Platts, Alex Glover, and Anthony Whittington, did I pronounce that correctly? Good. Along with apparatus operator Grant Klein joined the search. And whereas the Homewood Fire and Rescue crew of over 80 combined years of service provided beneficial to the search and eventual rescue of Reverend Burgess. And whereas firefighters Mike Platts and Alex Glover were on the team that actually located and rescued Reverend Burgess on Tuesday, April 9th, 2019. I now, Bruce Limbaugh for Scott McBrer, mayor of the city of Homewood, along with the city council, do hereby recognize and applaud Homewood Fire and Rescue for their assistance in the search and rescue of Reverend Sid Burgess earlier this month, again witnessed by the mayor and our city clerk. Thank you. Love to have any of y'all speak, chief.
Thank you, and thank you to the citizens for allowing us this opportunity. As you all know, we don't have a whole lot of wilderness in Homewood. So this for us was an excellent opportunity to test the skills, and I'm delighted with the way our firefighters performed. It goes to show that we hire some of the best in the business, and I'm happy for that. And thank you all for the --
We have some individuals here for this. Please come forward, we would love for you to. I'll let y'all bear with me while I continue to read, okay? Whereas the Birmingham-Jefferson County Transit Authority, known as BJCTA, is a public entity established by the state legislature to provide mass public transportation in Jefferson County, Alabama. And whereas April 25th, 2019 marks National Get On Board Day, is a day that encourages people to ride public transportation to save money, protect the environment, and improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whereas free rides will be offered to all customers on April 25th, 2019, in celebration of National Get On Board Day. And whereas public transportation is a $71 billion industry that directly employs 420,000 people and supports millions of private sector jobs. Whereas for every dollar invested in public transportation, $4 is generated in economic returns. Whereas 87% of public transportation trips directly impact the economy by connecting people to jobs, retail, or entertainment venues. Whereas the state of Alabama declares that public transportation helps people save money, help the environment, and improves America's quality of life. Whereas where public transportation goes, communities grow and prosper. Now I therefore, Bruce Limbaugh, on behalf of Scott McBrer, mayor of the city of Homewood, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2019 as National Get On Board Day. And the city of Homewood will join the Birmingham-Jefferson County Transit Authority and other public transportation agencies across the country for our participation in National Get On Board Day in showcasing the benefits and building support for the public transportation on April 25th, 2019. Therefore, signed by the mayor and attested by our city clerk. And if I can back up to our second proclamation, and again, forgive the personal story, but it's highly personal, highly emotional. I had a 15-month-old granddaughter that was literally trapped in an elevator. Her arm was pinned all the way above the elbow by a defective piece of equipment. That's not my words, that's the state inspector. And these men and others in the department were there with the jaws of life, and they were ready to chop that SEP sucker up and get her out. And I will forever be indebted for that. So thank you all very, very much. We have the best fire and rescue department anywhere, okay? Thank you. All right, so we will call this meeting to order. Reverend Burgess, Pastor Burgess, we're gonna put you to work, and we're gonna let you come forward for an invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please all stand with me.
On this earth day, we pause to pray for trees and plants, for crops and forests. We pray for water, oceans, rivers, streams, and ponds. For air and wind and climate and weather. For sun and clean energy. Closer to home, we pray for those who manage and maintain our city parks. And we give special thanks for our fellow citizens who faithfully participate in our city's recycling program, and for the health and safety of our recycling contractors. We ask your forgiveness, oh Lord, where we have failed to be just stewards, and for your guidance to all humankind in restoring the face of the earth. Peace be to this community, peace to this land, peace to all people. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, Pastor, thank you so very much. All right, Ms. Salter, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Gualtney.
Here.
Mr. Thames.
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Mr. Wolverton.
Here.
Mr. McCleskey.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Mr. Wyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Andres.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
And President Limbaugh.
Here.
You got three absent, but you still have a quorum.
All right, so we have a quorum, thank you very much. We're gonna carry over the reading of the minutes from April the 8th, 2019. We're gonna talk about some board appointments for a minute. Board of Ed, education for Ward 2, we're gonna open that tonight. What my preference would be is to keep that open through May 13th and then have interviews, bless you. We have interviews and then be ready for an announcement May 20th, okay? Thank you, I appreciate that. So that is open tonight.
You open it through May 13th at 4:30, is that right?
Sure, that'll work, thank you very much. Historical Preservation Commission, Ward 3 had a, we had it open and we didn't have any applicants. Mr. Jones, do you think we can reopen it until?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, we'd like to reopen it and have a deadline of May the 20th.
All right, good, let's do that, please, Ms. Salter.
At 5 o'clock.
That'll work.
4:30.
4:30, right, yeah, 4:30.
Thank you. Educational building authority openings, we've got two. My understanding, Mr. Kendrick, are you aware that we need a couple applicants for that, or?
Uh, sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
We have two that their positions are gonna expire on May 19th, so we're just trying to get ahead of the game to go ahead and open it.
All right, well, let's open that tonight. And again, they are out at large, and they will be open until, let's do, April the 13th, I mean, May the 13th, that's three weeks. And that could get ahead of the 19th, okay?
Okay.
At 4:30, of course.
Yes, sir.
All right. Again, all of us need to be finding those individuals. Homewood Environmental Commission, Ward 3, was opened March the 19th.
The term ended on March, the person that was in that position was filling a term of another candidate, and so that candidate, John Shank, is in right now, was filling somebody else's term, and so it expired March the 19th, so we need to open it.
Do you know John Walter? Okay. Could you discuss, oh, excuse me, could you discuss with Ms. Malone the possibility of him reapplying?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've already been in communication with Mr. Shack, I'd make sure that he was aware that it was going to expire. We exchanged emails last week when we were, Ms. Salter and I discussed this last week.
Is he gonna reapply?
He does intend to reapply, yes. Well, I think he may have already submitted, I'll have to double check.
She is not.
Sent an email to me, but I don't know if he's --
But we just haven't, we haven't opened it yet.
Now we've opened it, okay.
Yes, but he is aware of it, yes, sir.
Okay, and again, we'll see if there are any other applicants, so we'll go from there. Okay.
Is that through May 13th as well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Again, at 4:30. HDRA, IDB, we've got one at large and one Ward 2. Do we have any nominees at this point? Okay, let's try one more time. Let's see, we, let me speak to the citizenry. We really need folks interested in serving on these various boards. It's always been a challenge, certainly the last eight years. We seem to have plenty of applicants for the Board of Education and for the Park and Rec Board, but some of the other boards, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of folks willing to serve. And guess what, none of them pay, but it's a good service to our community, so we would strongly encourage anyone interested to get in touch with your Ward representative or Ms. Salter, either one, okay? All right, so we will reopen that one also and go through the 20th on those two positions.
To when?
The 20th.
May 20th.
Yes, we'll go longer on that, okay? All right, we've got two items to add to the agenda. One is committee referral to public safety, it's 310419. Request for consideration to close the roadway on Oak Grove Road between Raleigh Avenue and Hall Avenue on June 1, 2019 for Street Fest, requested by Andrew Wolverton. And again, public safety will be the committee.
Mr. President, can we actually add Back to School Bash as well, just so we don't have to revisit it again? It's gonna be August 24th, same timeframes?
Well, it needs, they need to be two separate.
Do they?
Yeah, they really, I understand what you're asking.
Sure.
But they do need to be two separates. Am I right, Mr. Kendrick?
That's your choice.
Oh, okay, well, if we can, look, okay.
So Street Fest is June 1st, and then Back to School Bash would be August 24th.
We can do them together, sounds good, okay.
August 24th?
August 24th, yes, sir.
But again, that'll be public safety.
Both are four to nine, yes, sir.
All right, good, I didn't know I could do that, thank you. 320419, this is new business other. Request for consideration of a vote by the Homewood City Council to oppose House Bill 346 and its companion bill, Senate Bill 244, which would further limit the regulatory authority of county and municipal governments, requested by the Homewood Environmental Commission and Mr. Mike Higginbotham. And again, that will be other new business. All right, so the chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of amended agenda.
Question, the last item you, are we gonna be able to take care of that tonight? I mean, I haven't read those bills. I mean, would anybody be opposed to sending that to committee so I can read the bills?
Well, I'm not opposed to what you're asking for, no. I know that Mr. Higginbotham had a reason for not wanting that, but go ahead, Mike.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the reason that when the HEC asked, went ahead and put it on the agenda, and they may want to speak to it too, but the reason we did it tonight was similar to why we hurried when we were doing the vaping bill, which is these things move through the legislature quickly, and we're not gonna have another committee meeting until May. And so my expectation would be that if we wait until then and go from committee, it'll be May 13th before the council would have another opportunity to talk about this. And I believe that, I have requested that Ms. Malone be allowed to address the council when that item comes up and explain what the nature of the bill is. And I certainly have some remarks to make about it myself, but that's the reasoning behind it, is because time is of the essence.
I'm just asking, if we're gonna put something on the agenda to discuss, it may be nice, maybe a couple of days prior, to send that out so we could at least read the bill.
Well, I don't disagree.
That's all I'm asking, so.
Yes, sir, I don't disagree with you. I attempted to put this on the agenda Wednesday, and it was removed, and I did not know until about an hour ago that it was gonna be the agenda tonight.
Well, the reason being that there was the strong possibility that both of these bills would have already been passed by the state legislature, and therefore it would render the whole thing moot. So I understand, you know, I understand the challenge, Mr. Jones.
I'd move for the approval of the amended agenda.
Okay, motion by Mr. Jones, second.
I'll say.
By Mr. Gualtney, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed, and that is approved. Okay, next item, the consent agenda is, no items on that, so we will not address that. We'll move on to the old business agenda. 090319, request for consideration to amend the development agreement at 2762 BM Montgomery Street, applicant Coker Holdings LLC for the owner, Tim Coker, for the purpose of relocating existing commercial building and replace with a new two-story, 6,000-square-foot mixed-use building. As a reminder, Planning Commission had a unanimous vote of 6-0 for approval of the recommendation of the amendment to the previous approved plan requested by Wyatt Pugh. We carried over the item, I know that, Mr. Coker, I challenged you with bringing forth some specifics about what this might look like. Does Mr. Wallace, with our audio video, have those? Okay, good. I will allow you to come talk about them if you would, Mr. Coker. Please approach the microphone.
Okay, I'm Tim Coker.
Is that on, yeah, that's on.
Am I good? Am I on?
Doesn't sound on, but it's.
Am I on?
Now it's on, go.
I don't see a red light.
Just speak closely.
Yeah, I'm Tim Coker, 2762 BM Montgomery Street, owner of the property, of the subject property through Coker Holdings LLC. The proposal is to redevelop the existing project, which is a mixed-use zoning. We're submitting to council, for council approval, we've already had approval from zoning, I guess, Board of Zoning and Adjustment, or pardon me, Planning Commission, pardon, that was the proper body. Planning Commission for the approval of this is a redevelopment of an existing building that'll be removed from the property, and then we'll be developing a 6,000-square-foot business occupancy and residential occupancy building with basement parking. The existing building is 100% business occupancy that will be removed from the property. There is a --
Talk to us about this, what are we looking at?
Oh, that is the proposed new building. The entry will be the building that's on the lower level left, that'll enter into the lower-level parking. And then the, it's interesting to note, I don't know if you can pan to the right or not, but, all right, there you go. The two buildings, that is, that building is 100% residential that's to the right, that's a building that we built last year. It was occupied May 1 of '18. The new building is gonna be at the same floor level as the existing building, the new one. And the tops are, the top elevation of the new, of the proposed building is slightly lower than the existing building. I do have with me this evening, Rob Walker, who's architect of record. I think as far as any other details, we've actually provided for parking that exceeds the requirements of the facility, and it's 100% conforming as far as we know.
So with the floor plan we looked at two weeks ago, still applause?
Yes, yes, residential on the upper.
Let's look at this closer.
Main level is lower, the lower level is parking, the upper level is residential, the central, the grade level, as we refer to it, is commercial and it's open, or business occupancy, and it's open, floor plan right now. That's the lower level. So, and the, the building design, which Rob Walker, I'm sure, would be happy to elaborate on, the building design is to fit the exterior appearance and transition this from a sort of a hard commercial look of a contemporary building that's next door, and then transition it to the softer residential look that's in the duplex building to the right there. So if there's any questions for me, or Rob, or any other, anything I haven't covered engineering-wise or otherwise, I'd be happy to address them. I have one, I think Rob has three.
Is there anyone on the council that would like to ask either Mr. Coker or his architect Wait just a second.
I'd love for Rob to further address thinking on the exterior design and look. He's better at conveying something like that than I am, so.
Okay, I'll let you share a succinct.
Okay, sure. The building to the --
Again, the microphone's important because this is broadcast to about 20 people.
The building to the left of the proposed building is a, it's a commercial building that's got a concrete facade and glass storefront. that's got a concrete facade and glass storefront. So, the lower level of the new building will match that language and the upper floor, which will be siding and windows, will match the, kind of the language of the residential building next door.
They refer, he, Rob is referring to the business office to the left that was built in 2015, commercial building.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one, one, one site to the south.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Can I ask a question?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. President, can I ask a question? I just wanted to confirm, I know visually, I'm looking at it, I know you said it, I just want you to say it again, this is the same height as the structure next to it that is residential?
Yes, yeah, the peak of the roof on the right matches the roof height of the one on the left.
And that's on, that's actually specific on the.
Yeah, quick question.
Oh, okay. Hold on, Mr. Coker.
Did you, did you actually have a floor plan of the, of the business level? I think we saw the residential and the parking.
No, it's, it's open at this point, it's ju, it's.
Just a big open space right now?
Yes, it's open space right now.
Is there, is there a pathway to get from the parking to that main level, the grade level, without coming back out of the parking deck or the parking area or do you have to? Is that a stairway?
Yes, there's stairway up and then there's an elevator up as well.
Gotcha.
And then the, there's also own-grade parking that's on the rear side, and I can show you that on the civil, civil boundary. This is the foundation to that basement level. This is parking that's on the, that's actually on the ground level that'll act, provide grade access.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Coker.
Mr. Walton.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just had one question about the runoff.
Uh huh.
It's one of the issues we've been tackling in the city. What precautions are you taking to ensure runoff's controlled and handled on the property?
We have planned in a 2,000, give or take, to maybe 2,500-gallon cistern that's going to capture and retain stormwater. That stormwater is also going to be used for the lawn irrigation. But it'll, it'll be a retention structure as well as a storage tank.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And lastly, the trees that are on the left side that are existing, were those we preserved as well?
Those are to stay, yeah. We have, I think there are seven or eight trees down that property line with the commercial next door. And then those, that hedge that has been planted above, that darker tan wall is an existing stone wall that we restored when we did the sidewalks up the, up the property three years ago. That was approved by the city council when we built it and then deeded it or granted it to the city, whatever you call that, Mike, I'm not sure what that's called. But anyway, those are the existing stone walls that will stay. The cistern is going to be subsurface and will be basically in line with the right-hand side of the planned building. That holding tank I'm telling you about, so.
All right, thank you, please have a seat. All right, the Chair would welcome a motion and a second for a roll call.
Do we have the second, second reading? Do we need the second reading?
Do we need the second reading, Mr. Kendrick?
No, sir, we have the first.
And we had the first read, we had the first read two weeks ago.
There's no second reading required.
Okay, well, then I'd move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Wyatt.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Walton?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
No.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andres?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
He's not here.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this pass is seven to one and this will be ordinance 2740. Thank you. Next item, 180319, public hearing continued from April the 8th, 2019 at 6:00 PM for consideration of a variance to the sound ordinance at 2823 Central Avenue, Suite 107. Rayford Cook, Greg Cobb, our BEZ department. Mr. Cobb, is there any other information you've got on this particular item?
Yes, sir. Last meeting y'all asked Mr. Cook to put the drawings into scale?
Yes.
And he's done that?
That's right.
There, there it is. They were out of scale last meeting, y'all remember, so.
Right, yes.
That looks previous.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that looks.
That looks pretty previous, can we find another one? Yeah.
They're really close.
I understand.
Actually moved the, this one here to an eight-foot instead of a ten-foot, which would be a 50-square foot width, which is allowed. And then the beds that I'm asking for on the front there would be the Brew Pub right across on the side to kind of make the building, to use that whole footage to make it look balanced now. And then I was looking to build a 50-foot, square foot signage on the back entrance since I have road. And I apologize, I had to step out last time, but Greg, the variance request is for one additional attached sign?
Well, actually, there are two because Brew Pub and Circle are separated from one another, so those are two.
Right.
The one on the front side meets code.
Sure, he has two entrances, so, yeah.
So you'd be additional, two additional signs and the square footage is correct on that's 50 square feet. He said he'll make the one on the backside 50 square feet, so he won't be out footage-wise, he'll just be multiple signs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Sir?
Do you have a new drawing?
Yeah, this one.
Well, we'll take your only drawing.
Give him that, give him that copy right there, both of them.
Wait, your first.
Mike, if you'll just change the writing on there to say 50.
We have two questions, start with Mr. Wolverton followed by Mr. Jones.
I'm just trying to remember, did we, did we change the roadway there so that it's one-way coming basically towards the front of the building?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
That works for also long-term planning, encourage pedestrians by sidewalk.
And lights.
And lights.
You're right, we'll put lights.
Okay, I guess I was.
Really pull it together.
I was trying to justify the reasoning for a posterior sign, understanding that it's a secondary entrance, but also that a lot of traffic would be seeing where the building is as they approach from the front anyway, so.
It's a challenging building to see the way that it's positioned in that, in that parking lot to begin with, it's far off from the main road. And then half of that building is tucked in behind the other, the other building that's, that has little donkey and still see the pops in there. So half of that, really can't even see half of that building, you can only really see it from one angle.
It's L-shaped.
Mm-hmm. It's L-shaped.
All right, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for coming back with the 50 square feet, I think that's great. I think you definitely need it on the back because people do park back there and rather than walking all the way around, they can go straight in the back.
I think it helps with parking, for sure.
Yeah, so I think that's going to help all around, so, I mean, I'd move for, to allow the two additional signs since we're within the, that would be my motion.
Second. Before, before we do that, the public hearing's still open, so, please.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Please. You forgot about that, Mr. Thames?
I forgot about that.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, please. No, no other questions? Good, have a seat, please, both of you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? Either for or against, we'd love to hear from you. If there be none, we will close this public hearing and now welcome your motion, Mr. Jones.
Okay, I'd move for the, allow the two additional signs for said property.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones and a second from Mr. Thames.
Second.
Okay. If there are no other comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous and that is Resolution 1950. And that passes. We move on to 170319, request for consideration to rename a section of the roadway from Columbiana Road to Green Springs Highway, from Lakeshore Drive to Raleigh Avenue and changing the addresses of 924 and 1,000 Columbiana Road to the 900 block of Green Springs Highway for less confusion in dispatching to the locations requested by Hannah Smith, 911 Office, Homewood Police Department. Just to finish up on our earlier conversations about that particular matter, you've talked with both residents now?
Well, no, sir. I went and talked to Mr. DeShara last week.
Right.
And the lady that was, reporter was here interviewing, he was on TV.
Yes.
Last week. And both of them were for it last week, or two weeks ago. So I went back today to see Mr. DeShara to see if I could find the neighbor myself and he said they had talked about it and thought about it and think we ought to just change the street sign.
I don't think we can do that.
Sir?
I don't think we can do that, can we?
Well, what it is, Green Springs, straight across the street from him is a sign that says Green Springs and, what's that, Reds?
Redfern.
Redfern, okay. That's straight across the street from his house.
I have a comment on this.
What happens is Old Columbiana Road comes down behind the tire store and dead ends and those houses all the way down through there are addressed Columbiana Road. Then, years ago, it came on across and it goes past like Mr. Kendrick's house. And then, when you get to the south side of Green Springs, of, when you get past the creek, the south side of the creek, it turns back into Old Columbiana Road and continues on to Vestavia. So if you look at it on the map, it's just a missing piece from when the highway was built. Whenever they built Green Springs Highway, they cut it off.
I understand, but I would also say to you that we were attempting to do this as a service from, for the benefit of the citizens from the first responders and.
Correct.
If the individuals that live there don't want to do it this way, then in my mind it's how they don't want to do it. Now, you might think something differently, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I mean, my comments are, I mean, this is a public safety issue and I think we've, we've gone and met with the residents to let them know, they might not be for it, but I'm for it personally because of 911 services getting there as quickly as possible. So, for, for, for the city's perspective, I think we should move forward with it. I know it's going to be inconvenient for a few people, but safety should come, should trump inconvenience, in my opinion.
Mr. DeShara wanted to come tonight, but he's not feeling very well, so he didn't come. But what he mentioned to me while I was at his house today was, it's a lot of different issues that I expected the first time I spoke to him was, all your checks that you've got from the bank, now you've got to change address on everything, change everything, so.
Guess what? When you move from one locale to the other, that's.
Yes, sir.
That's the situation.
I just wanted to express what he, what he said to me, too, because he's not here.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Sure, Ms. Higginbotham.
I, I am the one who delayed this to make sure that both people were, both people had an opportunity to know for sure what was happening, but I am inclined to agree with Counselor Jones, I think this is a safety issue. And as I said at the last meeting, my objection had nothing to do with whether we should do it or not, but I just wanted to make sure people knew before we suddenly changed their address that their address was going to be changed. So, I'm.
Well, I have not personally spoken with the neighbor.
I'm in favor of it.
Well, I would, I would think it's a safe bet to say both are well-aware of this at this point.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, so that being the case, the Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Say.
Wait a second. Motion for Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Thames. Mr. Walton, what, why were y'all pointing at each other? I'm confused.
Mr. Walton.
Mr. Walton, excuse me, excuse me.
Did we have the first reading last?
We did, we did. It was Mr. Wyatt that made the motion.
Mr. Wyatt, excuse me, thank you.
Out of order.
I got to develop eyes and back. Very good. Mr. Wyatt, followed by Mr. Walton, okay. So, roll call, please, since this is an ordinance.
Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andres?
Yes.
And President Limbaugh?
Yes, so this passes unanimously. This is ordinance 2741. And as a point of information, Ms. Salter had to step out and she certainly communicated that with me and I appreciate Mr. Burgett handling this for her, okay? All right, 150219, public hearing set for April 22nd at 6:00 PM for consideration of a variance to the driveway ordinance at 5515 Rumsen Road, request about Will Smith and Greg Cobb. We'll start with a report from Special Issues, Mr. Higginbotham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don't believe my minutes include anything about this particular item.
Mr. Burgett, have you got anything?
I apologize, it's my first time doing this and the minutes don't have it, so I don't, I don't know, trying to, I can give the report.
I'm going to let Mr. Jones give this report.
The, the report is that you voted unanimously to send it out without objection, without recommendation pending the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I didn't notice it was a public hearing, I thought.
Thank you. No problem. We are now opening the public hearing and Mr. Cobb, I'm going to start with you, followed by.
Okay, Mr. Smith requested to put in a drive-through, which would be kind of a half arc, so he can pull in and pull out, so you don't back out onto the streets in front of his house. The terrain is very steep right there and this would end up in, actually in the city right-of-way. So, he's brought us another picture tonight that shows the landscape and details of what it's going to look like in front of the house, right there that is. That's, the bottom would be the street and that would be all the terrace landscaping that goes up to the house. So, he just wanted to show you what it's going to look like with the retaining walls. You've got to build retaining walls and terraces because it's so steep.
All right, any other comments, Mr. Smith?
No, I, well, actually, that's not true. I would like to point out that this section of Rumsen Road got a sidewalk added to it several years back and it narrowed the road so that it's now more narrow than most of the roads in Hollywood and it was turned into a one-way street. So, I just believe that it would, that having off-street parking in this section of Rumsen would make it much safer for guest parking and delivery vehicles.
All right, any questions from the council? Ms. Andres, because it's.
I live right around the corner and second, everything he just said is very steep, it's very narrow, his neighbors all have parking in their, on their lots and you could not, you could not put a car there to, for any on-street parking at all. You couldn't, you wouldn't be able to get through, so, that's second, everything he said.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton? Mr. Cobb, do you know what the width of the roadway is roughly in that area?
I think, I'm near it, about five feet. I think it's 19.
That's after the sidewalk, correct?
After the sidewalk.
Okay.
And it is a one-way? So, just, just to clarify for those that weren't here, what specifically is the, is the variance for in this case?
Part of this drive is in the right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
It's a two-foot variance, one is driveway variance, the other is a 100% of the right-of-way.
Right.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you, y'all can have a seat. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? If there's not, we will close this public hearing. We've heard Ms. Andres's comments, so therefore the Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
I'll move, please.
Motion for Ms. Andres, second from, from Mr. Wolverton. Good, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, there is none. So this is Resolution 1951 and Mr. and Ms. Smith, that is approved. Thank you very much. All right, 080319, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the driveway ordinance to add a second entrance at 311 Lejeune Way, requested by Deborah Smith, Wyatt Pugh with BEZ, report from Special Issues. Wyatt Pugh with BEZ, report from Special Issues.
I think I've got this one, Mr. Chairman. I think I've figured it out. The committee met and voted unanimously to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, so we will open this public hearing, and Mr. Cobb will always begin with you, sir.
Okay. We have a picture of this. This driveway is, I mean, the lot width is 59.78, I think, something like that. It's, I can't remember the exact number that's on the drawing, but anyway, 60 feet is where the driveway ordinance allows you to have the extra driveway like she wants. And so she's off by about two inches or something like that, inch and a half. I can't remember.
All right. So, so literally less than two feet, correct?
She said 1300. She's off by 1300. I think we decided whether inch and a quarter?
Inch and a quarter. All right, so the drawing, if you'll explain that, Mr. Cobb.
Well, the yellow is what she's asking to add. The piece on the right is already there. The piece on the, the right-hand side is the driveway. That says where all the dots are.
Right.
Basically, it's an engineering symbol for concrete. But she wants to be able to pull out, pull in, pull out. And like I say, our ordinance requires a 60-foot width in order to do that, so.
Well...
If you look at the drawing, it says recorded 60, so if she, the tax map shows it as 60 feet wide, survey came out at 59.87.
Well, one more question from Mr. Cobb. Practically speaking, can you make that turn from the new rounded driveway into the original driveway?
Well, she's going to have to have a little bit more radius on that bottom line to make that turn. I can see that, but it's, that's just a sketch. Right there with the 5 is you're going to have to start a radius turning into the old original driveway here, or you know you want to make it if you didn't.
The body shops of Birmingham would appreciate it the way it's drawn, but...
So would the tire stores.
Yeah. I understand. All right, Ms., I assume you're...
I'm the homeowner.
Okay. I'm sorry. Speaking to the microphone, please.
Yes, I'm the homeowner.
Good. And you are?
Deborah Smith.
Okay, Ms. Smith. Any questions of Ms. Smith at all?
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Cobb. So are there any other homes on this street that have driveways like this?
I don't know.
Ms. Smith?
I've looked at them.
There's one on the corner, on the end of Lejeune Way.
Okay. I was trying to see, and I couldn't see any from the map.
It's on the corner of Lejeune and Lopredo.
Okay, thank you.
They put that in a few years ago.
Mr. Gualtin's pulling up the Google map picture.
And secondarily, we established during committee that the tree would, would or would not be taken down?
Well, if we have to take it down, which we haven't, we're hiring a landscape architect to actually draw it, we would put a new one up that would be comparable to the one we're taking down.
Thank you.
But we're hoping to save it and not have to take it down.
Gotcha. Thank you.
We agree with you. All right, any other questions, Ms. Smith?
Question for Mr. Cobb.
Mr. Cobb?
With our new ordinance that dictates the amount of lot that could be developed, would this calculation come into play here?
Well, it would, but I've looked at that, too. I haven't got good measurements on it. Doesn't appear to take up 50% of the lot with the house and the other driveway.
Okay. But it, obviously, if, if we need to double-check that calculation, if it does, she would need to use a permeable surface for at least a portion of the driveway.
That's correct.
Mr. Wolverton?
We'll know that after our kick, gives us the final drawing, we'll know for sure.
Just, just like with most variances, and I, I think I was not there for this committee discussion, so I was just curious as to the necessity of adding the drive and what the hardship was for wanting it or needing it, I guess. Wanting it or needing it, I guess.
Well, I will say that there's a lot of, we have a brand-new house going up right next door.
We have a brand-new house going up right next door.
And the street is very congested with a lot of parking on the street.
And I have an 87-year-old mother living with me who does drive.
And it makes it very difficult for her to back in and back out with all the cars and trucks on the street.
And it makes it very difficult for her to back in and back out with all the cars and trucks on the street.
So that was one of the reasons that we wanted to go ahead and add.
I can also confirm there's a lot of on-street parking on that road. I can also confirm there's a lot of on-street parking on that road. Sometimes I've had to back out.
Yes. My neighbor across the street has triplets and another daughter.
My neighbor across the street has triplets and another daughter, and they're going to be driving soon, so it's going to even get more congested as children grow and start driving. So we thought we'd go ahead and see what we could do now.
I understand, Ms. Smith. Okay. I'm going to assume no other questions. You folks can have a seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak to this issue? If there is not, we will close the public hearing. And the Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
I'll move to approve.
Motion for Ms. Andrus.
Second.
Second from Mr. Jones. Right, right, right. And, and, Mr. Wolverton's pointing out, certainly the requirement would be to repair and replace any sidewalk as, as part of the contract. Word. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that is Resolution 1952, 150419, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 2829 19th Street South, requested by Daniel Von Hegel and Greg Cobb, report from Special Issues. Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met on this issue and voted four to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. Motion was made by Counselor McCloskey and seconded by Counselor Gualtin.
All right, good. We will open the public hearing and start with you, Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir. This is a multiple sign variance for Jax's plan to tear down and rebuild the building. What they will do is take down the big pole sign, and they want to use all attached signs. That's their request. There won't be a pole sign or any kind of monument sign. And they have altered it from what we saw last week. There was a, on the dark side, there was a subdued Jax in there. You probably got a better term for it than that, but go ahead and tell them what you've done.
Well, I kind of had a prepared statement.
Your name is?
My name is Daniel Von Hegel. I'm with Pro Signs on behalf of Jackson &amp; restaurant. So what we had covered last week with the planning committee, we had two wall murals on the right-side elevation and the left-side elevation, both totaling to about 216 square feet of signage. We decided to scratch that, bring that back. We played with the idea of, you know, proudly serving Homewood since 1962, but we just went ahead and decided to remove those murals and just stick with the three elevations of signage that we have right up here.
All right, good. Questions?
Chairman, just, just to clarify, just I want to make sure I remember this correctly. So the variances are for number and size, or simply for size, Mr. Cobb?
What are you going to do, is for a foot or something? I do, and I'd love to read this off. So we're actually requesting a variance to the sign ordinance for an additional 71.46 square feet of attached building signage. With the new building, we're asking to have a total of 121.46 dispersed across three wall elevations. And you can see them right here. That would be the front and the right, the main entry elevation. And I think we should have a, and then there is the drive-through side with that Jax signature lollipop logo.
All right, any other questions?
Just, just to clarify.
I do.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, the, I'm trying to remember which, which of, which of those signs was illuminated. Basically, everything that says Jax with the All About the South is not, is that correct?
That is correct. All About the South. And let me just go ahead, and I'll read it off to you guys. The, the front elevation and the drive-through side has a standard six-foot by six-foot illuminated sign cabinet, that circular logo. On the right side, the entry side, there's reverse-cut channel letters that are edge-lit, so they actually shine back into the building. That's about 44.33 square feet. And then we have the All About the South letters that are non-illuminated, about a foot by 20. So those are about 20 square feet. Our pole sign outside right now, as it stands from Homewood code, is 35 feet overall height. It's a 10-foot lollipop circle, so we're at about 350 square feet just in pole sign right now. Obviously, that reader board's good for us because we get to advertise, you know, two-for-22 deals, stuff like that. And then the standard sign we have on the front elevations is 28.26 square feet. So what we're doing is, we're completely okay with removing the pole sign. We get that. We get what the city's trying to do, especially downtown. Our biggest thing is just because we're right there on 19th, right there smack in the middle, is on 28th Avenue and 29th Avenue, that's some heavy traffic going by, back and forth. We would love to have the opportunity to have some visibility on each side elevation to at least, at least give somebody who's driving by a chance to be seen by them and hopefully earn their business.
Mr. Thames, you have a question?
Well, as everybody knows, we're updating our zoning and signage regulations in downtown, and granted, they are not complete yet, but we do have a draft. And I tried to go back over the course of the week and just kind of compare as to how this proposal would fit into what most likely will end up being put in place. I just don't see how a monument sign could not accomplish everything you just requested. And just looking at, again, a draft that would allow for a monument sign to get you the north-south visibility, it would also allow for a canopy sign, which would take care of your All About the South. I'm just not going to support multiple attached sign variances when, one, it's not really in keeping with our future vision, but two, it's, this is not Highway 31, this is not I-65. You know, if someone's on 19th Street and they want to go to Jax, they know where Jax is.
Yeah, I understand. I think it's mainly for people that are, you know, not familiar with the area. Jax has been here for a long time, so a lot of the locals know on Saturday mornings, you know, to come to Jax and, you know, have roundtable discussions. I think it's the people that come to visit Homewood that are not familiar with Jax. I went by TCBY, right there at a shopping center on the corner, and actually measured their sign cabinets. They're four by 12, and they have three of them right there on the corner. So they're at 144 square feet of signage, and they do have 31 to their advantage to draw some business. We're right there in the middle. We need as much visibility as we can get. And I think going from about 378 square feet of signage that we have right now down to only 121, we took off the wall murals. I feel like we're trying to do our part to, you know, at least try to get some visibility.
I understand.
Well, honestly, in the proposed new sign ordinance, the wall mural is something that's listed. Again, the city may decide not to include that, but I would just hope as a good corporate citizen, which you are, you guys will want to work towards our, our future, what downtown's going to look like. I think Jax is an important part of it. And just, if you're on 28th or 29th Avenue, you can see a monument sign just as well as you could see a sign on either side, north and south-facing side of the building.
Yes, sir. Jim Avery, Director of Development with Jax is here. Jim, you want to say?
Yeah. You know, I, I guess from, from Jax's perspective, we are in a business environment, and most of the businesses, retail businesses, even our direct competitor, Arby's, behind us has multiple building signage. The, the Arby's has a monument sign in and of itself. Part of what we're trying to do is, is stay even on a competitive basis with those other businesses in the area. I've been here in the Birmingham area for about two years, and I located our Homewood store by our pole sign, because I was driving whatever the main street that runs down through Palisades here into town. And that, that's how I located it, because I was out of town and I wasn't familiar with it. Had I had a monument sign there, I would have never seen that, would have driven, driven right by. So I personally experienced that type of situation. But very important for us, you know, signage, signage represents our brand, and that's, that's a big part of, of a retail business, so that's...
I understand that completely. As an owner of a retail business, you know, signage is important. But I do feel like it could be accomplished another way and accomplished, it's going to be more in keeping with what's going to develop in the area. I cannot speak to Arby's, that wasn't part of that council, and in that council's defense, there probably wasn't a wholesale scrapping and rebuilding of the downtown zoning and sign code in process when that was done. Well, I know there wasn't, because we're just now doing it. So anyways, that's my feelings on the matter, but I do appreciate Jax. My kids love it, and so do I.
Great, thank you.
Well, just, side note, that really has nothing to do with this issue. What sort of timeframe for construction do you think y'all are looking at?
We're, we're actually hoping to start within two weeks, to start closing the restaurant, salvaging our equipment, shutting utilities off, and starting demolition within a couple of weeks. We're, we're that far along.
So again, the question is, what sort of length of time do you think the actual construction will take?
Our, our typical project's about 120 days.
Okay. Okay. That's a lot of time to miss biscuits, so...
You're right. We're, we're hoping to keep that to a minimum.
Any other questions, please? Mr. Jones?
I wanted to, again, thank you for coming back with less signage. So I, I made the request last time, and I appreciate you, you doing that. I, I tend to view it more from a higher level compared to what's there now, and that you're actually building a restaurant that, that even has like our, our rock structure that's part of, of a lot of our city properties, I think, is, is really good and kind of keeping with that. So whoever thought of that from an architectural standpoint, that, that's great. I, I can, I can live with, with what you proposed here by, by taking off the, the additional signs that you had. I think that, I think that'd be fine, and taking down the pole sign is of utmost importance to me, so I appreciate that.
Any other questions of these gentlemen? Mr. Wyatt?
I, I tend to be worried about the same thing that Mr. Thames is worried about, which is putting in signage that, granted, it's not in place now, but that it sort of immediately gets changed, that immediately violates the ordinance in hindsight. And I, I just, I wish there was a way to do it. I assume that y'all are not interested in a monument sign. In, in place of these, some of these signs.
There's really not a lot of real estate, you know, right across the street. There's not a lot of room to actually put that without giving a, a tree or parking space or something like that because of the new building. Jim?
And, and that is, that is correct. Right. To us, the building signage is, is very valuable, and we're willing to give up any kind of freestanding sign to be able to have our building sign.
And, and look, I, I appreciate particularly your willingness to take down the pole sign and...
And really, the murals, too.
And, and the murals as well. And lord knows, I've bought my share of biscuits in my 20 years in Homewood, but, but I, it seems to me a monument sign actually might help you attract the customers on the side roads that you're looking for better than this. And maybe I'm missing it, but isn't it going to be...
I, I would dis, I would respectfully disagree, just because of driving down both roads, being able to look over with line of sight, you're going to see something raised, you know, more of a higher elevation on the building than you are, and I think it would probably be, and Greg could speak to this, but probably six feet overall in monument sign. Jax loves their reader boards, even if it's two lines of copy trying to advertise sausage biscuits. So we would, you know, try to incorporate that, but, but I would disagree. sausage biscuits, so we would, you know, try to incorporate that, but I would disagree. I think we have a better shot at getting customers to the store with the, you know, the two-side elevation of wall signage.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Have a seat. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this item? There being none, public hearing is closed. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Mr. Jones?
I'd move to approve the recommendation, I mean, the, what, not sure the numbers, Mr. Cobb, whatever the numbers are, but I'd move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Jones. Do we have a second?
Real quick point of clarification. One more time, can you run through the variance request, Mr. Cobb?
It's a multiple signs and area variance, sign area.
Is it all of the multiple signs requested are out of variance when it comes to size?
There's, how many did you say there were?
Two in the verbiage.
There's two wall signs, 28th and 26th square feet on the left in the front elevation and then the Jack's letters on the right side elevation at 44 square feet and "All About the South" at 20 square feet.
So collectively, they go over the amount, but individually they don't?
Individually they don't. Collectively, it's 71.46 square feet additional we're looking to get a variance on.
I don't know if it's too late, but, you know, I'm just wondering if, and I understand that they've got some time constraints that they're dealing with, but I'm just wondering if there's any possibility of continuing the discussion rather than, you know, voting one way or the other tonight and...
I mean, I have a...
I want to get on with construction.
I understand that, that's why, yeah, that's why I just said that.
I have a comment about that. I mean, in this case, I mean, we're typically, if we're asking the applicant for something we want, it's clear, you're, you know, if you don't get what you want, then you're just going to probably just leave it like it is. And so I'm viewing it as, do we want this and I think, feel like we need to vote for it, up or down. I don't think there's any point in continuing it because I don't think we're going to have any type of change on that side. I mean, you came back with your best and final proposal. Am I correct? Okay, so that's kind of where I view it, is that let's vote on it and if it doesn't pass, then we'll just have a pole sign out here like it is now.
Yeah, so as Mr. Thames kind of suggested, and it's, I don't know, maybe I misinterpreted what your response was, but it sounded like you weren't totally in disagreement with some sort of monument sign and from what Mr. Thames just referred to, there was a possibility of a blade sign or something along those lines as well that would give you some of that same kind of upright and east-west kind of visibility.
Well, I think they've presented their best to us.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, Mr. Thames.
I'm just looking at the, how the new building's going to sit on the lot. Can that pole sign, pole sign remain with where the new building is going to sit on the lot?
Unfortunately, no, it cannot. The current pole sign would be...
The pole sign's going either way.
Yes.
Well, if they rebuild, it'll go.
Not if they don't rebuild, it'll stay right there.
Yeah, right.
If they don't rebuild the whole building...
If they don't rebuild, the pole sign stays, yeah.
But I think, y'all, your plans are to build the new building regardless.
Right. Our plan is to scrape and rebuild the entire building.
Sure, okay.
Of course, you know, the signage decision is a big, is a big part of that, so...
I just, I question the, Mr. Jones, it's not really a proffer if they've got to take it down either way because of the way the building sits on the lot. They were losing the pole sign no matter what.
Well, yeah, because that's the way, yeah, they're building it out to where the pole sign is.
Correct. My point being, I don't necessarily consider that a proffer when the applicant was going to lose the pole sign either way.
Well, they could, they could put it on top of the building.
No, they couldn't.
I've seen that, too.
Our option, sir, would be just, we would not rebuild the store. So that is a possibility that I'd have to back to my leadership with.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
I just want to point out that we literally have heart of Homewood meetings every day this week. I mean, we have been working on this. I've sat in every single one of these meetings and so I have to agree with Mr. Thames. I mean, I, we've worked hard on this, the regional planning commission's worked hard on this and we literally have one, two, three, four meetings this week talking about these issues. So I think for us to take a vote approving this on a Monday night when we are meeting with the regional planning commission on the work that they've been doing for the last year, to me, is speaking out of both sides of our mouths and...
I would like to say, just for the record, I appreciate, you know, I understand that you guys have done some things to try and meet us, you know, and make some, make some changes there. I guess that, kind of what Jennifer just stated is kind of where I am right now. I just want, you know, again, I understand there's a timeline, you know, it sounds, yeah, it sounds like it's up in the air right now, but I'd hate to vote decisively and, you know, potentially have it not go your way and then have to start all over versus if there was some bit of latitude to look at, you know, things that were mentioned just now.
I understand, I guess from Jack's perspective, honestly, learning that a monument sign is, is an option is something we've just learned this evening. We've kind of been told up to this point that that was not a possibility.
What, a monument sign?
Correct.
No, sir.
Well, no, it was discussed in committee that a monument sign was not allowed in that district. That's what was discussed.
I believe the ordinance in District 5 does not allow any freestanding sign.
Well, but having said that, our two ward, well, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Waltney, but Mr. Thames certainly has indicated he'd be more agreeable to...
Well, I'm referring to the current draft ordinance before us that we're considering an option would include monuments.
All right, so let me step out of this role for just a second. As a resident of this immediate area, I would much rather see the proposed picture than the current reality and...
I completely understand and I would too and look forward to it and I completely appreciate the fact that they want to rebuild the store and I appreciate the fact that they have started to make some effort to tailor to our request, but there again, I don't consider it a proffer if the pole sign is going away any, either way. That to me is not a proffer and I could be completely wrong, but I feel like you're most likely going to build, rebuild the building either way.
Well, gentlemen...
I could be wrong, maybe I'm willing to take that risk.
Okay, let me blow the whistle for just a second. Gentlemen, gentlemen...
You're conferred with council.
I know. Here's, here's what I would like to see us do.
Sure.
Let's follow Mr. Wilverton and Ms. Andrus's recommendation and let's carry this over and we will have some additional conversations internally in our next meeting, May 13th, will certainly, it will be on the agenda, okay? Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll withdraw my motion.
I know. Well, no one, no one's saying it anymore.
Well, I was waiting on it.
I know. Me, too. I did close this.
Yeah, you, you did, yeah. You closed.
All right, next item, 2004-19, public hearing set for May 20th, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of possible vacation of the alley on 18th Street requested by myself and we set that and carried that over.
Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes.
Public hearing is...
Continued.
June the 8th.
Yes.
Okay, well, we will move that to June the 8th. No problem. Thank you. All right, if you'll record that, Mr. Burgett, I appreciate, no problem. 0104-19, request for consideration to declare...
As far as June the 10th, I follow.
June the 10th?
Yes, of course.
Okay, well, I did not look at the date, June 10th of work. Okay, thank you. And that should be a busy meeting. 0104-19, request for consideration to declare miscellaneous interior and patio furniture from the senior center surplus requested by Berkeley Squires, our Director of Parts and Rec. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Before I give the report to lighten the mood, what is Irish and comes out in the spring? Patty O-Furniture. Okay, so, the committee met...
You were going to say that with a...
I don't know, I don't know what we're talking about. Okay, so the committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of declaring miscellaneous interior and patio furniture from the senior center surplus.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones.
You're welcome.
So, first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
It's an ordinance to establish and declare the following described. Personal property of the city is no longer needed for public and municipal purposes and the property is described by photographs attached to it and a description to the mayor be authorized to dispose of the property by auction to the highest bidder.
Thank you, sir. Chair, we welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Wyatt, second from Mr. Waltney. Roll call, please.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wilverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And President Limbaugh?
Yes, so that is unanimous. This will be ordinance 2742. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Move for approval.
Motion for Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Higginbotham. Roll call.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wilverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
And President Limbaugh?
Yes, 2742 passes unanimously. Next item, 0204-19, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Birmingham-Jefferson County Transit Authority, requested by Mr. Burgett. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, and I want to thank Mr. Thames for staying on top of this and making sure we get the best deal and there's a lot of things that are happening with the BJCTA and I appreciate all the, all the help you put in and Mrs. Smith as well. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval for this item.
I have one comment, please.
Yes.
The contract doesn't have a description of the services and I understand there may have been a conversation with representatives of the CTA about that. Will you have that tonight? It's going to need to be added to the routes that have been selected.
Not sure we can get it tonight, but could we get it, please? Yes, sir.
Representative here.
Mark's here.
Good evening, Frank Martin, Interim Director of BJCTA. You can definitely get that, we'll have it for you, but not this tonight.
I understand, just soon as possible. We really would appreciate it.
Just stand here to provide some routes?
Yes, absolutely.
And I don't know what routes would select, it's...
Should there, shouldn't be any change from the current routes that are called? They did get some packing air last meeting, but I don't, there was no change, I don't believe.
Does this include the majesty connector?
Correct.
Well, we still need the written description, but thank you, Mr. Mark. We appreciate that for you standing around. Thank you so much, sir.
That's part of my motion, I guess.
So we, the motion, the finance decision is the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is Resolution 1953. I think I'm correct?
I don't think so.
Good. All right, good. Well, let's move on. 0304-19, request to authorize the mayor to sign software/hardware contract for Soho Parking Enforcement Solution. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, and all these reports are, these are budgeted items, so these are more executing on them. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval. We heard a report from Chief Ross on the, that the software would enable writing electronic traffic tickets transmitted directly to the court system, so we're looking for efficiency there. So five to zero is the approval from Finance.
Sounds good. So we have our motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's 1954. That is unanimous. 0404-19, request for consideration for repaving Highway 31, shades, Kahaba Tunnel. Jennifer Andrus, report from Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval. We did have some questions and I'm sure that's why Mr. Cobb is up here on how we would execute on that because we did have some ideas on maybe saving additional money, but we did vote to approve repaving.
Yes, sir. Berkeley made a good suggestion last week about possibly painting the inside of the tunnel with a non-slip type paint that is put in the bathrooms at the park. Looks very nice and when I got it priced, I had a separate price for moving it and another price for putting it back. So if you'd like to go in that direction, what we'll have to do is let them remove it and let us see what's under it and if it's in good enough shape and we can get enough of that asphalt, asphalt usually turns loose in concrete pretty easy. If it's in good shape, then I'd like to think about entertaining the suggestion Berkeley had about painting it with that anti-slip paint and it would look a whole lot nicer than asphalt. But I've got, I've already got to set up a contract that we can do it that way if that's, that's what happens.
Mr. Cobb, are we going to do that during the summer when it's not being used?
Either on the weekends or during the summer.
My preference would be during the summer.
We're so close, that's what I talked to contract, we're so close to summer now that we're there.
I think so.
So probably the time they can mow up, it's going to be, schools will be out, but we'd like the opportunity to look at it and make that decision if it's in good shape.
Would that be consistent with your motion?
It would be, yeah, it would be. We're going to give, provide them discretion to do that and it's coming out of small infrastructure.
Good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's 1955. 0504-19, request for consideration to donate parcel of land to the City of Homewood and you see the PID, but the legal description is Lot 18, Block 7, Rosedale Park, less... What does the RDRW stand for, Mr. Kendrick?
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way, okay. Requested by Matt Aitken and Melody Salter, our city clerk. Report, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend accepting the donation. That's all we did on this item.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. That's 1956. 0604-19, request for consideration of bid for the Homewood Police Department, FFNE. That's the equipment and furnishings for the new building. Requested by Jeffrey Black, CMH Architects, and Melody Clark. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of CMH as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder of the six packages.
All right. Mr. Kendrick?
CMH is the architect.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So what the resolution has attached to it is Exhibit A, which sets out the low bidder for Route 8 through L and the office number four, as well as the bid tab, so that you're just declaring that those indoors set out of Exhibit A are the lowest of responsive and responsible bidder.
Okay.
All right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that's unanimous. That's 1957. 0704-19, request for consideration to set a bid opening for spring tree planting, requested by Amy Malam and Melody Salter. Report from Finance. Do we have a report?
Yes, we do. I'm looking at something else. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of setting the bid opening for May the 6th, but didn't, I think we needed, we needed more time.
Since we need to move that to June 2nd because of a tiny element, June 2nd...
In that June 3rd?
I thought it was June 3rd.
June 3rd.
June 3rd?
June 3rd is what she told me.
Okay, so I would, I would amend our report to say June 3rd, 2019 at 4:30.
All right. Ms. Malam is here, is that okay? You underst, okay, good. Thank you very much. We'll move on. 0904-19, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract renewal with Pre-Poll, it's P-R-E-P-O-L, requested by Chief Ross, Sergeant Suddles, both with the police department and Melody Salter. Report from Finance, please.
Yes, sir. The committee voted, met and voted five to zero to recommend approval for the contract renewal with Pred Poll.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Pred Poll. And Resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that's 1958 and that is approved unanimously. 1404-19, request to amend the fiscal year 2018-2019 budgets, requested by Berkeley Squires and Robert Burgett. Report from Finance, please, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of the amendments to the fiscal budget 1819.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous and that is 1959. 1204-19, request to work with, in the city right-of-way at 2829 19th Street South, requested by Dale Bright and Greg Cobb. Report from Special Issues, Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The committee met and voted three to one to recommend approval. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Counselor McCuskey.
Alright, so we have a motion from special issues, uh, is there any further discussion on the council? For the sake of any clarification, just kind of an FYI. Alright, there being none, what? I'm sorry, go.
Comment. So, this is the item that we, we discussed in committee last week, and they're wanting to transfer, if I'm correct, the planting of the trees onto the city alley. So, I feel like this is a dangerous precedent to set for the city taking on the businesses' responsibility to put that in our alley, because the alley is gonna be ever-changing with the development that we may having, may have downtown over the next few years. So, to me, I feel like this self-imposed hardship that they've put on themselves by increasing the square footage they're building up to, basically, looks like about as far as they can, and reducing their parking spaces from 30-plus down to 20 or 21, uh, and then transferring the responsibility for that planting to be on our property. Now, they'll, they'll maintain it, granted, but I don't feel like this is the precedent we wanna set in downtown, long-term. So I feel like this needs to be included in their site plan and on their property.
Alright, thank you for your comments, sir, appreciate it. Alright, we have a motion from special issues.
One, well, sorry, Mr. Mr. President, one other question, has the adjoining property owner been spoken with?
I've not spoken with him, I took that drawing, a copy of that drawing, and put my business card on it and today's date and time for this meeting, and took it over there Tuesday, we met last Monday, I took it over Tuesday. Uh, Mr. Nacos wasn't there, Sam Nacos is who owns it, I left it with his cashier, and not heard from him.
Let, let me say this, too, we're not actually taking the entire KNT, we're only doing...
I understand.
Five.
Five feet of it, which leaves the, Dimitri's the same amount of what we're using, so...
I understand. Alright, again, we have a motion from special issues, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, let's do a roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
No.
Mr. Tames?
No, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
No.
Mrs. Andres?
I'm gonna abstain, I was not here for any of this discussion, and I'm not caught up to date on this, so, I don't know enough to vote on it.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so that's a 4-3-1?
4-3-1, yes.
Mr. Kendrick, does that pass?
Could've been tied.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. That'll be Resolution 1960. Alright, 130419, request to work in the city right-of-way at 400 Shades Creek Parkway, requested by John Millhouse, Greg Cobb, report from special issues, Mr. Higginbotham.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the committee met, voted four to zero to recommend approval pending a tree count, the motion was made by Counselor Gualtney and seconded by myself.
Do we have that tree count?
Uh, Greg did go and look at the trees today, uh, he said he'd be right back.
Greg? Greg?
Greg. I'm here.
Did you look at the tree count for us, please, sir?
I looked at those trees, they have a forest over there. Um, the very first photograph, you can't see it very well, but there is a survey state right there. And so they'll be working to the left, and, uh, I don't believe there's one, was it Heritage Tree? But around the building, if you'll just scroll through the photos, you'll see there are 24 crepe myrtles, 30 of those big hedges right there, they're hollies, that are turned into trees, I guess is what they are. What's in the foreground right there is Eli Agnes, which should take over Brooklyn Mall somewhere and cut it back. But, um, the only little trees that come out, those in the back on the side of, by, between the curb and that stake, if you're gonna go to your property line, is that correct?
Yes. So I've basically, to sort of second what Greg said, I don't think we're removing any, I take that back, yes, I, I don't think we're removing any protected trees, I went out Sunday and measured the trees that we felt were coming out, you know, four and a half feet up, and all with one exception were way under the 14, 14 inches, right, under the 14-inch diameter requirement. There was one tree that I would classify as iffy, it was pretty close to the 14-inch dimension, and it was also questionable as to whether or not that tree could be saved. Uh, it's, it's outside the footprint of the work we're doing, but it's very close, so iffy. But, having said all that, I think between the planting plan and the trees that we have remaining will be in excess of or meeting, uh, the requirement.
Alright, any other questions for the gentleman here? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Alright, uh, we have a motion from special issues, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Alright, roll call again, please, Mr. Burgett.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes.
Mr. Tames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham? Mr. Wolverton? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andres?
Yes.
And President Limbaugh?
Yes, so, this is 19, Resolution 1961, and it passes unanimously. Next item, committee referral agenda, chair would welcome a motion and second for approval. Motion from Mr. Tames, second from Mr. Wyatt, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and we'll move on, that is approved. Uh, 260419, request to set a bid opening for fuel tank at Station 3 in referral to the finance committee requested by Chief Bresnan, with our fire department, that bid opening will be May 20th at 4:45, if that's okay with you, Mr. Jones.
Uh, actually, the chief asked me if we could move it to June the 3rd.
We will move it to June the 3rd at 4:45 PM, okay? Thank you, sir.
Yes.
270914, request to set a public hearing in referral to special issues for consideration of a variance to the fence ordinance to add a section of fencing across city alley right-of-way at 1575 Valley View Circle, requested by John Mark Reeves, uh, Wyatt Pugh, and Greg Cobb, we will set that for June the 8th at 6:00 PM, 2019. 280419, request to set a public hearing in referral of, to the special issues committee for consideration of a modification of a previously granted variance to the Homewood fence ordinance to allow a six-foot privacy fence to remain along front property line at 612 Hamball Avenue, requested by Jeremy Galloway, Wyatt Pugh, and Greg Cobb, we will also set that public hearing for June the 8th.
June 10th.
2019, it's, uh, June 10th, yeah, I kept putting 8th on there.
You know, Mr. Limbaugh, I, I've made a mistake, and I apologize, I got my months mixed up.
May.
It should be May, and I apologize, that's my fault.
So you want 2704...
You can hear the next, you can hear both of those at the next meeting, the chief.
Sure, let's do that, so, sure.
It's actually May 13th, I just missed it.
270419 will be set for May 13th.
Trying to get summer for that.
I agree.
I apologize, I was correct, it's May 13th is the next meeting?
Yes. Alright, so we will have those May 13th, 2019, for 270419. And 280419, and that's okay.
Your only mistake tonight.
Mr. Kendrick, mistakes are allowed.
Mr. Limbaugh, do we need to, and this may have something to do with noticing, but would we need to change the date on 200419?
Um...
Vacation in an alley, I mean, we may need the, the time to notice.
No, we, 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 we needed that for what we set it for.
Okay, alright, just, sure, yes.
Yeah, there, there, that's gonna take some more time.
That's what I figured.
290419, request for consideration of an ABC 020 restaurant retail liquor license for Two Core 910 LLC doing business as, um, Tostadas located at 1831 28th Avenue South, North 175, having received, uh, letters of no objections from both fire and police. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Motion from Mr. Wolverton, second from Mr. Jones, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and that is approved, I assume. Was there any nays? Okay, good. 300419, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for a period of April 8th, 2019 through April 21st, 2019, from the City Treasurer Finance Committee, Mr. Jones?
Uh, Mr. Tames?
Mr. Tames?
Reviewed those.
I did, um, all appeared in order. You exciting notes, we, we've acquired two new radar signs for the police department.
Good.
So, watch out wherever they put those out, and shadows up to date on her, on his flea and heartworm meds, so, I recommend approval.
Motion from Mr. Tames, second from Mr. Higginbotham, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is Resolution 1962, okay. Is that correct, Mr.?
Yes.
Good. Okay. Finally, 320419, request for consideration of a vote by the Homewood City Council to oppose House Bill 346 and Senate Bill 244, which would further limit the regulatory authority of county and municipal governments, requested by Mr. Higginbotham. Mr. Higginbotham, you wanna talk with us about that a little bit?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, what I would really like to do is, Ms. Malam to come forward and share why the HEC asked for this, if, if you don't mind, but while she's coming up and signing in and doing whatever else she needs to do, um...
You've been incredibly patient, and I appreciate that, but in return, I'm gonna ask you to be succinct.
So, um, what the bill, what the bill would do is essentially prohibit municipalities from setting regulations regarding, um, plastic bags and one-use disposable plastic items in their, in their cities, and Ms. Malam, I'm sure will have a lot to say about what, what the HEC's objection is, my objection to it is simply, I think it's a municipal matter, and I don't think the legislature should be telling us we can or can't do anything like that, that will be up to the local communities, our community's not even entertaining that at the moment, but that's really not the point to me, the point to me is that I don't, don't think the legislature should be dictating how cities go about doing stuff like this, so, with your permission, I would turn it over to Ms. Malam.
Before I say something to echo what he said, please go through.
Well, I was gonna echo what he said as well, that is our main takeaway, we feel like this is a legislative overreach, we're not advocating at this time for any sort of ban on any kind of container, and no one across the state of Alabama, no municipality, county, or city is advocating a ban, in fact, there isn't...
I was, I was gonna say, can I update you on that?
As a subsequent, neither reaction to this bill, Birmingham has voted in a resolution or passed a resolution to oppose this, and then on top of that went ahead and said, "We're gonna also ban plastics." And that's fine, but that's not what we're saying, and that's, um, you know, we're also basically focused on the legislative overreach here, and wanted to point out also, um, that it's not only preventing what you may wanna do in the future, but it's also creating a conflict with the stormwater regulations, so, the new stormwater regulations and the MS4 permit language does crack down on litter in the waterways and requires that cities control the litter, and so this is sort of taking away one tool with which you might be able to in the future comply with that regulation, so just keep that in mind as well. And I just wanna clarify that the, the two identical bills, the House bill and the Senate bill, um, are currently proposed in committees, they have not left their respective committees yet, so there is still time to oppose it, but we wanted to get in tonight because they could move to the floor at any time, they've had like third and fourth readings, and I don't really know what all those readings mean, but they're still in the committees, and they have been, you know, making their waves through the committees pretty quickly. They would prohibit local governments from adopting or enforcing in any ordinance that regulates auxiliary containers, so there's a lot of like talk about this being about plastic bags, but it's not, it's any container made out of anything designed for transport, um, consumption, or protecting goods, okay? So cloth bags, styrofoam, it's not just about plastics. Yeah, and I don't know why you would consume, a container would be consumed, but that's interesting language in there, I'm thinking what they mean is like what you eat on, like if you wanna go to Jackson, buy, you know, something, whatever that container is, they don't want you to regulate that as well. So, I mean, it's a little bit, um, out there. The bills are basically copy and paste legislation that they're throwing out as bait, they were written by the American Legislative Exchange Council, and they're sending these out to as many states as possible to see who will bite, and unfortunately, the fishing is good in Alabama, 'cause they got two bites. And the proponents of the bill basically say that they cannot, and I will quote Senator Livingston, um, is saying they can't allow environmental extremists and alarmists who run rampant in places like California to get a foothold in Alabama. Well, if I can clarify what I think he's saying there is that 40-plus municipalities, something like 49 municipalities in California individually voted to regulate plastics, whether it was banning them, whether it was adding a tax, they had many different levels of regulation on plastic bags specifically, and single-use containers and single-use plastics like straws, for example. Obviously, California has a huge coastline, and plastics getting into the ocean is a big detriment to their economy, and so individual municipalities had the power to do that. It was only after almost 50 municipalities individually decided to do this, that the whole state decided to go ahead and do it. So this is trying to preempt that in any other state, it's, you know, obviously funded by cost industries and other plastic industries who, this would affect their bottom line. So, just kinda giving you the backstory, I want you to keep in mind what this is all about and where it's coming from. Senator Ledbetter said, "Plastic bags are reusable and the recycling industry in Alabama employs 30,000 jobs," but what I think he fails to understand is that the types of containers included in this bill are not recyclable, plastic bags and single-use plastic containers and styrofoam are not recyclable in the state of Alabama, those plastics are not going to our recycling industry, and they're not reusable except by environmental extremists, you know? I take mine to Publix and I reuse mine as trash bags, but you have to reuse them like four times in order for them to be, you know, less environmentally detrimental or to stay out of the landfills, and over half of all the plastics created today are intended to be used one time. So, I mean, just, you know, clarifying some of the remarks that are in support of this bill, which don't really make a lot of sense for us, um, we recently had the Alabama Environmental Council close down in Birmingham because recycling industry is not doing well because of overregulation by China and cracking down on the contamination, um, so I don't think that if anyone in the state of Alabama decides to ban containers of any kind, whether it be plastic or not, it's gonna hurt the recycling industry. Most of what ends up in the landfill is plastic, and they're single-use plastics, so, something like 300 million cubic tons of what goes in the landfill is plastic, and that, to give, put that in perspective, is equivalent to the weight of humanity, so, it's a pretty big deal. From an ecological standpoint, Alabama is ranked fifth among all 50 states in terms of biodiversity, and that's in large part due to our freshwater biodiversity, in which we are ranked number one in all 50 states. We, in Homewood, sit in the Mobile Watershed, which is the fourth-largest watershed in North American continent, 65% of, all of Alabama flows into the Mobile Watershed. Shades Creek in Homewood is 25% of the flow of the Cahaba River, which is the single-longest free-flowing river in Alabama, which goes into the Mobile River Confluence and out to the Gulf of Mexico, so if you don't think that this matters to us, it really does. And again, you're not voting to ban plastics tonight, but you're just saying, "We don't want somebody to tell us that we can't do that in the future if we decide to."
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Appreciate it.
And Birmingham, Montgomery, and Mobile have all passed resolutions or voted in opposition of this as well, and Dolphin Island and Fairhope and Orange Beach have also voiced their opposition, I'm not, that's as of today, I'm not sure how many other cities are doing this.
Well, I was gonna mention, um, Mr. Gualtney and I sit on a, sort of round table with some other, uh, area of cities, and we get together on a regular basis, and we had a long discussion about this last week, and so it was Birmingham, LaStavia, Mountain Brook, Hoover, and us in Homewood. So, we heard from Counselor Quinn directly on his, um, ordinance that he was putting forward based on this, so, um, it was a great discussion, and I think I, I agree with Mr. Limbaugh, this is definitely a municipal overre, I mean, uh, state overreach.
Alright, thank you very much, chair would welcome a motion for approval.
Don't move to, flip second.
Alright, mo, okay, motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from, uh, Ms. Andres, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so you're opposed. I understand. I understand. I understand. Well, this passes, yes, this passes 7-1, and it's, uh, Resolution 1963. Ms. Malam, thank you very much for your succinct explanation. With that, our agenda is cleared, uh, let's talk about some, uh, committee meetings, which will be scheduled for May the 6th, which will be two weeks from tonight. Mr. Jones, I assume?
Well, that, that's, I'm, I'm, you voted for me to be the delegate for the state convention, so, I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in Mobile for that, um, state meeting, and I'm on the fair committee, too. So that's why we spent five hours one day going over all of the House bills and Senate bills that affect municipalities, and this never even came up, it wasn't even in the top 20, so that's why I'm confused also. So, I will not be able to conduct, uh, finance, I'll, I'll ask, uh, someone else to, to run the meeting at, I guess at 5:00, and probably 30 minutes.
Thirty minutes will get it?
About it.
Okay, good, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Mr. Gualtney? Mr. Tames?
PND, you said 30 minutes, Mr. Jones?
Yes, that's right.
Uh, PND, let's set, um, let's set it for 20 minutes. We're gonna have, uh, GMC up here to, to brief the council on, on the latest 18th Street plans, we've had meetings, Andy and I have met with, uh, property owners, and it's been drawn up to minimize the impact. minimize the impact of property owners, right, so no right-of-way acquisition is required. So we need to see the drawing and get everybody's input and get the final engineering done and bid this project, so.
Five-thirty to five-fifty?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Also, just wanted to say congratulations to Jennifer for the Boston Marathon. It's fantastic.
Thank you.
My knees hurt just thinking about it. Also, we had our Roselle Day of Service a week ago, Saturday, right? Went great, got a lot done. I want to selfishly give a shout-out to my old fraternity, Sigma Nu from Sanford, that showed up and provided the lion's share of the labor. I don't know if, as an eighteen-year-old frat boy, I would have showed up at eight-fifteen on a Saturday morning in the drizzling rain, but they did, and they did a great job, and we got a lot done, and Andy and I are very appreciative of that. And that is it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have anything other than, I guess, I need to set special issues.
You do. Along.
For five-fifty, obviously. I looked through the agenda earlier. I'm going to say a half hour, because I know we've got the eye-tree thing coming up at the next committee meeting that we're going to have to go through, and so I'm going to say a half hour.
So what if I cut it five minutes, and we said five-fifty to six-fifteen?
Okay, you can always do that.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Mainly just want to thank the Parks and Rec Department for putting on the Easter egg hunt. I guess it's been over a week, but I think they do a fantastic job. I was excited to be out there and see the new fields and see what you were referring to a couple weeks ago with the turf in field, and so just thank you to the Parks and Rec Department for what they do, putting that on, as well as all the churches that put on various Easter egg hunts and whatnot. Raleigh Avenue Baptist Church was one that we attended this weekend, so we just appreciate all that those entities do for the city and for our kids and the families. I don't even know if, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing, sorry. And I know we've got the exceptional foundation basketball game on Thursday.
At what time?
It's at five. So, and I didn't realize at the time when we were setting it that my son's got a kindergarten performance that night. It's at six, so I might be like Barry and kind of be in there and be out. Maybe we can see how fast we can make a game go this time around, but.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So it was a fun night. We've had too many meetings where we agreed with each other, so it's nice that we have a little, you know, disagreement, so looking forward to the game. I see we have the smack-talk posters, yeah, on the wall, so that was great, and look forward to it, so thank you for all organizers.
Thank you. Mr. Wyatt?
Just looking forward to the game, and I guess I will set these meetings for Patrick and Peter. We'll make Peter last.
Public safety.
Public safety is six-fifteen. I think he'll probably, or will probably, fifteen minutes probably should do it.
Six-fifteen to six-thirty?
Yep, that's it.
All right, thank you. And then six-thirty for how long, from Mr. Public Works?
Well, I agree, but, you know, let's set it for fifteen minutes.
Let's set it for fifteen minutes, just in case. Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
I just want to remind everybody about the four meetings that are going on this week with the Regional Planting Commission. There are two public meetings tomorrow, eleven-thirty to one, here in this space, right? It's right here, isn't it? And then five to six-thirty, this is going to be presenting the downtown, the draft of the downtown code that they've been working on. We have a work session from nine to ten-thirty on Wednesday. Talk about, that's the, no, that's more on the draft downtown, and then the signed code, that's Thursday, nine to ten-thirty. So four opportunities to meet with Regional Planting Commission.
Good, thank you. Quick story, and we will dispense. So a grandson had a Mountain Brook, I love this, a Mountain Brook-Homewood baseball game Saturday afternoon, and so one of the Mountain Brook coaches just was walking past me, and he said, I just don't understand why we can't have fields this nice in Mountain Brook. I said, well, if you just get your city council to cooperate. But I didn't tell him who I was, so that was kind of interesting. With that, this meeting is adjourned.